Okay, so here we are, Transportation Committee meeting Tuesday, November 17th. My grandma's birthday.
Good birthday.
Happy birthday Betty, obviously, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so tonight the plan is to go over the application for the Bloomington Transportation Corporation Board. So I think we can just, I thought we would go through them one at a time, decide who we want to invite to a group interview, and work our hardest to give some time to Sophia to schedule that group interview, most likely after, the week after Thanksgiving. Does that sound good?
Sounds like a plan, Kate.
Same here.
Okay, okay, so you know how I run these meetings, pretty casual. We're just going to really like, I just made a spreadsheet for myself with the applicants, and we can just go through them one at a time. Does that sound good to you all?
Well, I've got some questions first. Looking at the screen, and it's been a while since I thought about this board. I see three council, two mayoral seats, and the three council seats have a two-year, three-year, and four-year. I didn't know we had any four-year, commissions with four-year seats. And then the mayoral seats are one and two-year. So is there any kind of, do we have any kind of sense of exactly how the seats are apportioned? And are they really four-year appointments for the council?
I don't know the answer to that question on the four-year. I definitely assume that we are appointing seat one for two years and seat two for three years. That was my assumption. I don't know then if...
Well, I just don't understand why the third seat would be a four-year appointment. Sophia, by any chance, do you know this?
I do not know. I'm taking a moment to look at the Indiana Code.
Okay, that'd be good to know. I mean, there's no rush on that, but we should know that before we make any final decisions. But right now, we're just looking at interviews, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just looking in the Bloomington Municipal Code, and I don't see that level of detail in here about...
I suspect that's statutory board.
Yeah, it references Indiana Code, so.
Yeah.
But we could maybe address that next time.
Okay. I'll chime in real quick. There is, Indiana Code 36-9-4-18 has a section referencing a director can be appointed for a term of four years. So I believe it is driven by Indiana Code.
It can be, or it must be.
It says shall appoint a director for a term of four years, and until the director's successor is appointed and qualified. I think that this might be a staff liaison and/or legal question that we can delve into a little further.
So, I mean, I'm assuming then that C1 and C2 were filling in seats. In other words, somebody left and we have to complete their term. And also, or are the terms staggered? Like, I just, I'm surprised that I have questions, frankly, because I thought I knew this board, but I really don't.
Typically, the way I understand the seats to be, and of course, I'm not an expert on this particular board. The designation per seat is stagnant. It is continuous. I don't believe that it's one years and two years because someone has left and therefore are fulfilling the rest of that term. That's pretty standard across all the boards and commissions, from what I can tell.
Well...
I think that's right. And it looks, I'm sorry.
No, just all the more reason why that's confusing, that there's, we're appointing one seat for two years and one seat for three, and I just have no sense of why.
Yep.
It is confusing.
But if you look at the terms in onboard, there, you know, one of them is one year, and one of them is two years, and one of them seems to have been three years, so, yeah. I mean...
It does appear to be driven by Indiana Code. When the committee members have a chance, if they could look at that code specifically, it's a little clearer. It is driven by code.
I also want to point out that we have an application on file from James McClary, but he's currently a member appointed by the mayor.
Right, right, right. So he's currently serving. So, he, right, doesn't need to be reappointed or considered then for the right now, because he's, yeah, yeah.
Will you repeat the code number again for me? Thirty-six dash...
Yeah, so it's on the information page for this particular board, but the one that I'm looking at is thirty-six-9-4-15, and it's in reference to City's Public Transportation Corporation's Board of Directors membership.
Thank you.
Sure.
So I count eleven, other than Mr. McClary, I count eleven different people who've applied. And I think one of the things we need to figure out is how many of their applications are still current, as in that they're still interested in being considered for a seat on this board.
Sure, so if you give me one second, I can let you know who has responded to my inquiry about still being interested.
Great.
Right, yeah, Sophia reached out to folks. But also Nicole said that in our emails, let me see, that basically we consider all of these still like active applicants.
That's correct. And for a little bit of clarity as well, individuals who might be current members appointed by a different entity are not, those applications are not considered out of date or not current. So that's why you still see, for example, Mr. McClary's application in the list.
Okay. And the current incumbents in the seats that we're looking at are Ms. Obermeyer and Mr. Cartwright.
Yes.
Is that right? Okay.
Okay, so where are we waiting to see which ones have responded? Or do you want to, or are we getting started? I mean, we've gotten started, but...
I think if the committee members could go ahead and get started, and I will, as soon as I find that information, I will chime in.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we want to start at the beginning with Ms. Bangor Giorgio? Yeah.
Well, I'd like to also find out how many of the applicants are currently serving on another board or commission. I think that's going to be relevant, too. Maybe not right now, but at some point, I'd like to know that.
Okay, yeah, so I don't know if we can know that right this second. Like, what we can know is how many, at least how many they applied to. So I put that in my notes about if this is the only one, right?
So Kiara has applied to a lot of commissions. A whole long list, and that was back in May. So I would like to know if she's still interested. So she just graduated from IU in the O'Neill School and the Geography Department of the College. See, she did give a resume.
Right, taking like Urban Problems and Solutions class, some of the O'Neill School requirements. I think we can just talk, I mean, we have a lot of applicants here, and I wouldn't mind knowing if she's still interested, definitely. But I would say I am looking for people with some specific experience or education around public transit.
So if I may jump in, the individuals who responded both with interest and availability are Kiara Bangor Giorgio, Daniel Bingham, Fox Booker, Kathleen Field, Andrew Gunther, Randy Paul, and Alex Cartwright. I can repeat those if anyone needs.
Yeah, please do.
Yes.
So I'll go by first names, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So Kiara, Daniel, Vox.
Those two Daniels, Daniel Bingham.
Yes, Daniel Bingham. Vox Booker, Kathleen Field, Andrew Gunther, Randy Paul, and Alex Cartwright.
So the others are not interested?
Or I did not hear that from them.
I mean, is that, because Nancy Obermeyer has, is the incumbent and has put in an application October 30th. So that's, it would seem to indicate that she is still interested.
That's a valid point. I think that it's subject to interpretation. If the individual reapplied recently, it's fair to say they are still interested.
Okay, that's eight.
I mean, I think we should look at all the applications, and if we want to interview someone, we ask, haven't heard from them, we ask them if they're still interested and want to give an interview.
Yeah.
If I can state that at this point, they have been reached out to at least twice, if not more. For the incumbents, they've also been notified that their term is expiring or has expired?
Yeah, it seems to me we don't need to review the ones that have not responded at all.
Who've not responded, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I would review Nancy because she's on there, and she recently applied. She may even be chair of that board, I'm not sure.
I know in the past that, you know, we've often had to tell somebody who was an incumbent that they had an obligation to reapply so that we would know that they were still interested in being reappointed, if that was, you know, what the council decided to do. So just again, the date on that application is a sign. I mean, like, even if we haven't heard from her, I think we've heard from her because she applied so recently. So, yeah, I mean, we should assume that she should be interviewed.
So that's eight. We have two spots.
Okay, so we have about an hour for this, so eight minutes each, you know?
That won't be necessary.
Okay.
If we're trying to decide, if we're trying to decide whether or not to interview people, you know, I mean, I don't have a problem, especially if we're doing group interviews. I don't have a problem with maybe doing two groups of four.
Yeah, I'm with you, Steve. That makes perfect sense.
How does that strike others?
Well, I think that there are differences among these candidates. And, I mean, I think that someone like Kiara, and I appreciate her interest, her broad-ranging interest in city boards and commissions, but I think she has very little experience, either real-life experience or experience in this field. So I don't, I don't really foresee that I would vote to appoint her. So I don't really want to waste her time to come in if others feel the same.
Well, in the past, we've often found ourselves, as a nominating committee, interviewing a single person at a time, and that with so many applications, we have to consider group interviews. If we're doing a group interview anyway, you know, I mean, it's not like we have two applicants, and it's not like we have twenty. You know, with eight, it breaks down into a couple of chunks. I mean, I don't mind dropping people out, and I don't mind allowing them a chance to be heard. We've also found, I mean, there are people who apply to multiple commissions, and they may not be the right fit for one, but they may turn out to be a good fit for another. And, you know, like, it's, it never really hurts to get to know somebody. So, I mean, while I may concur that she doesn't seem to be, have as much experience as other people, you know, I don't, like, if we have room to do a group interviews, it wouldn't hurt. I mean, I don't think there's much difference between four and three.
Well, it's just gives the people less time to talk, I think.
Like, I guess that depends on how much time we devote to the interview.
Yeah.
Did you imagine maybe paring it down to six or five candidates and having a single interview?
No.
I could imagine that. Okay.
Sorry, I just jumped in.
Yeah.
Yeah, what'd you think, so?
I mean, I did, too. I could see it happening in one meeting if, I mean, I agree with Isabel that we've got a different range of applicants here. I mean, I see also what you're saying, Steve, but it is... I think it's okay that part of our job can be seen as reading applications and making a decision based on an application. I don't think that outside of the realm of what is allowed, I guess.
Ron, what do you think?
It sounds like we have a good group of candidates. Let's do two groups of four. I don't, I don't, I don't know how else to make it fair, unless we kind of talk, say hello to everybody and get a feel for how they would fit on the committee, so.
Well, I mean, we have more than names, right? It's not just that they put their name in. I mean, they provided us information on the application form and perhaps a CV. So I think it would be fair to weed out some. But if you all would rather not, that's, that's fine. It looks like we're kind of split two and two, so.
I know that, I forgot which committee that we were looking at, filling some seats on, and there was some, we didn't interview some people, and then we did interview some people, and then there was some disagreement on how that occurred. So to be fair to everybody, I would be happy to do a couple of group interviews and talk, say hello to all of them.
The one thing I'd suggest if we do that is that Mr. Cartwright and Ms. Obermeyer should be in separate interviews. Shouldn't put both of them in the same group interview. But that also should not be construed as we're putting these three people up against the incumbent and this one, and, you know, like, that's, we can choose any two from the field of aid. But as long as we did that...
I would say, I would disagree. I don't care if they're in the same one or not. I think we throw out two times, people pick one, we get two groups of four. It doesn't matter to me if they're together or not, honestly. It's, I don't, being, serving on a committee, to me, doesn't, I guess, give to me any kind of special status as to how you are interviewed.
I think it'd be hard enough to find time, so I think we should just
Right.
See which of the two times works, yeah.
I mean, I'm ambivalent, so that's fine.
Okay, so that's what you want to do?
Seems like that's the consensus.
I feel that way.
Well, I don't, but neither do you.
No, I don't, no, I thought there was a purpose to our meeting tonight, but there really isn't. So, I mean, really, I would just say, moving forward, if this is the plan, we don't need to have a meeting like this. Like, this feels to me like a waste of time.
I don't think so. I mean, we've, we're exploring the way that, that, you know, standing committees do nominations. It's a relatively new process, number one. Number two, you know, I think that if there was a person who had applied, who was obviously either unqualified, I mean, we already, you know, filtered out people who had not expressed interest. I think we've learned something tonight. I think if we had had twelve or more, we would have thought twice about interviewing twelve people. But since we're going to have to have a group interview anyway, we're doing, interviewing more than one candidate at a time, I don't think this conversation heard one bit.
Okay, so it sounds like our action item is we will be scheduling two interviews sometime the week after Thanksgiving. Hopefully, that's enough time to get that on a lot of people's calendars. So why don't the four of us look at times with Sophia right now to give some ranges of evenings, I think, for that? And that will be the action item for the memo, and we'll finish this meeting.
If I could also add, that is a crucial component because we are trying to balance thirteen people's schedules. So if there could be between two and four times for interested applicants to choose from, that would be ideal.
Yeah, that sounds good. And I think we're, we'll all then have to block this time out on our calendar so it doesn't fill up. So we're looking at the week of the 30th. Is Tuesday the, yeah?
Oh, we're, are we looking at the 30th? I was going to give my availability for the 30th.
Okay. Do we want to stick to evening meetings?
I think so.
I think so?
Sure. Yes.
So Sophia, is it best for you to capture this? I'm sorry, this feels a little haphazard, but is it best for you to capture this as we say our availability?
Yeah, I can, I can track that.
Okay, I guess we're going to figure out what we all have in common. Okay, I'm free all evening on Wednesday right now. I mean, Monday, sorry.
I'm free after 6:30 Monday, and after 5:30 Tuesday and Thursday.
We're going to do Monday first, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
After 6:30 on Monday, Steve?
After 6:30, I'm available, yeah.
Not available until seven on Monday.
Ron?
I'm available Monday after 5:30, Thursday after 5:30, Tuesday after 5:30.
We're going to do one day at a time. We're going to do one day at a time. So it sounds like Monday, we could start at 7:00 PM.
Right.
So I'm going to just hold that on my calendar, that's how I'm doing it. Tuesday?
After 5:30.
Same.
After, after 5:30.
Same. Okay. Wednesday?
Not available.
Not available.
Council night.
Okay. I, okay, Thursday?
After 5:30.
After 5:30.
After five.
Okay, I'll do after 5:30 as well. So 5:30, okay. And Friday evenings are not for meetings, so we're finished.
Shall we try a lunchtime on Friday?
I was wondering about that, yeah, since we all tend to have work sessions.
As long as there's not a work session scheduled. And I, off the top of my head, I don't recall whether we'll have one that day, but we might.
It's driving me nuts.
Would we want to say like 1:00 on Friday, in case we have a work session? And then it would be following. I know some of you have day jobs, so, no.
No, I have a work meeting at 1:00.
Okay.
I mean, we should leave the possibility of noon open. Like, I just can't guarantee it. I have to check.
Can we, can one of us bring up the council's calendar? Let's see.
Yeah, I don't want us to commit to a time we can't guarantee. I think that's where we get into trouble.
Well, it's not a matter of, I mean, you know, like, if we need a work session, we need a work session.
Oh, we're not saying even if it's not scheduled yet.
Yeah.
We might have one.
We may not need one. If it's scheduled, we may not need it. If it isn't scheduled, we may need it, so.
Well, what about like a Thursday at noon instead?
Mm-hmm. I could do Thursday at noon.
Yeah, that's not a good day for me.
Okay.
Tuesday, Tuesday at noon. I could do a Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday at noon. Thursday, I'm in the middle of working and training and...
I could, I could do a Tuesday or Wednesday at noon.
Yeah.
Well, since we don't have an evening, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Right.
Could you repeat that? What day for noon?
Wednesday, the second.
Okay.
Okay, so we have basically five, probably kind of like five to 10 times, since we've got some pretty clear evenings. December 1st, December 3rd, okay. Okay, does that sound good?
So just to review, after 7:00 Monday, after 5:30 Tuesday, noon Wednesday, after 5:30 Thursday. Is that right?
So Wednesday, it's between noon and one, right? Just an hour, yeah.
Yeah.
Just one hour. And I also think during our time, before we start our meeting, we should, we should get a list of interview questions that we can ask in the, in the two meetings. Like, I could put something together, and we can all read one type thing, just so we're consistent in the meeting.
That's good.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Make it as fair and as transparent as possible, yes.
Okay. Or I can compile a quick list if people send me a couple of questions as well. Okay, anything else for this?
Oh, you want us to send you questions?
Sure, I mean, I think it might make sense that we all read off the same paper. Is that okay? And just to be pretty...
I agree with that. I just didn't know if you were going to come up with the questions, or you want us to send you ones to put on there.
I, I like a team effort, and I think everyone has their own priorities, so.
Okay.
If you want to just, and just really a few, because we won't have time. We're doing an hour, right?
Um, okay, actually, that's a good question. Is it for the group interview, are we doing a whole hour or half an hour? Because how, an hour seems like a long time, even for four people.
Well, but when we've done individual interviews, we generally allot about 15 minutes per person. So I think that there's going to be enough, I mean, that, that still works out to 15 minutes a person. So I think that that gives everybody enough time to talk about their thoughts. Maybe we don't need quite that long, but with crosstalk and pleasantries and the like, I think that we'll need an hour for a group of four.
All right, I'm just concerned about people's time, but...
Well, as long as you don't go over an hour, I think we'll be okay.
Hard stop at one hour.
I mean, we are trying to interview eight people, you know, that's a goodly amount of work. I think we're finding a pretty efficient way of doing it. I think this is still pretty efficient.
Okay.
Awesome.
Okay, I think we're finished here.
So if I could take a moment to recap, to be sure we have it all together, okay. The availability for all four council members on this committee is 11:30, which is a Monday after 7:00 PM. Tuesday, December 1st after 5:30. Wednesday, December 2nd at noon. And Thursday, December 3rd after 5:30. Is that correct? And the individuals that will be selecting from those times are Daniel Bingham, Vox Booker, Kathleen Field, Andrew Gunther, Randy Paul, Alex Cartwright, Nancy Obermeyer, and Kiara Bangor Giorgio. Correct? Those eight? Oh, yes.
Yes, but I have a question about one of them. Andrew Gunther is currently involved in litigation against the city of Bloomington, so I don't know if it's appropriate for us to consider him for this post.
Good point, actually, and he did apply to another commission, so, and that's what it's about, I think.
Maybe we can get Stephen to weigh in on the legal aspect of that.
Good point.
I mean, I I don't, I don't know, I don't know how important that is to me, the legal aspect. I think it's the principle of the matter that here's somebody who is suing the city of Bloomington, and he wants us to put him on a commission. I just, it, it just bothers me.
Well, I, I figured there might, could be a legal entanglement if he gets.
That's what she's saying, too. Well, that's not, no, you're, I take it back. That's not what she's saying.
There's no, we have no legal obligation to interview him or to appoint him. And I'm saying that I'm not inclined to even interview him because he's currently suing the city. Anybody, is anybody with me on that, or am I just alone?
I think I am. I, I quite like to accept that. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, like, I, I would like our, our legal advice to weigh in on it.
But I mean, I, I think if two of us are opposed to interviewing him, you know, I don't know if we need to vote to, we don't need to vote to decide to interview people. Yeah, I mean, I, I think Isabel makes a good point.
Yeah, it is a good point.
Issue there.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with that. It's, you know, there's going to be other commission positions opening up, so this isn't an hour never situation, and it might make sense to just wait that out.
Literally, he's suing because he was trying to get an appointment to the Plan Commission, so you know, like, he's, he's, he's applying to a board or commission. You know, I, I would at the very least like to see the outcome of the suit, but I don't think it's a good I mean, it's, this is not a commission in the same way that the Plan Commission is. I mean, it may be statutory, but not the same. I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I would like to know what Stephen thinks, but I'm, you know, not inclined to interview somebody who is suing the city over getting on a, on a commission.
Okay. So we are all agreeing to interview seven, ask seven people to interview the list Sophia read to us, and taking out Andrew Gunther.
Sorry.
I agree with the dog.
That's pretty good.
Bad timing.
Yes, I think I, I agree with your assessment, Kate.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I think we're ready. Just like one logistic, if, if there are five people that can only make one night, and, you know, now two for another night, I think we, because it's so hard to schedule with many people, I think we just, as long as it's not at that lunch hour, would just extend a little bit and have more people. What do you all think?
If it's not Wednesday, we should be average 15 minutes per person.
Just putting that out there, and.
Yeah.
There are so many of us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds fair, yep.
Okay.
So I will draft the action memo and send around for the electronic signatures, and that will be delineating the decision that was made today by the committee, which is to interview the seven people. I'm happy to name them again, but I think there's a clear understanding at this point. And I will follow up with any scheduling issues that come up, as well as any additional items that pertain to the seat specific, as well as code specific items for, for this board. And my sincerest apologies for my dog yelling.
No problem.
It's called coronavirus, you know, we're all
It, it keeps us relaxed, keeps us relaxed.
It's fine.
Feeling alive, okay, so I think we can be finished here. Some of us can prep for our next meeting, more prep. Okay, right?
Move to.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone.